This is Whitucki. Mr. Bauer.
Called it today, January 21st, being the Saint Joseph Board of Commissioners to order, please stand pledge or remain standing for a prayer.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come together today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift and help you have given us. We thank you for the opportunity for us to get together today. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. Ask that you guide and direct our meeting to full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish your goals this day. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
I believe the election of officers on by air, so we will skip to the first item that I have on the agenda, opening reading of bids. It appears there are none. We will move on to reports and requests. First item from the Board of Commissioners is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the accounts payable docket.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next up, our employee of the month, Commissioner Fleming.
We're excited. Tricia Kerikow is the employee of the month, and she's a very hardworking woman. She goes above and beyond. Appreciate. Expectation, that's it. I was like, I'm sorry. Expectation, always hungry to learn more. She is an asset in everything, every way. Even when her thirst for knowledge can challenge at times, she keeps this off going at all costs. So we really appreciate all the efforts and hard work that she does, and we certainly are glad that she is now, you know, the employee of the month. So let's applaud Tricia Kerikow.
Come on up.
Come on up here, please.
If anyone would like just a couple of words, please feel free to do so. They're fantastic. As embarrassing as possible, if it could be possible.
I put this in a while back.
Yeah.
Name and address for the record. One at a time, please.
Mohammed Shabazz, 722 California Avenue. I just want to say that there's nobody else that I know of that deserves to be an employee. I was happy to put my name on there and the congratulations.
Oh, that was nice. Kim Ryskovich, voter registration, fourth floor. This was put in some time ago. You should have been with it. Anyway, I think I might have changed my mind about some of those things I did. It's very possible. You never know about me. But no, Tricia's a wonderful employee. I don't know what this office would do without her, and we're very happy to have her. Thank you.
Good, hard worker. Thank you.
Probably should. Yep.
If anybody else wants to get a picture. So I really enjoy the employees of the month, so it's appreciated so much.
All right, moving on to bills passed by the Saint Joseph County Council. The public hearing held on Tuesday, January 14th. The county council passed the following items. We've got bill number 11319, which is ordinance 120. This is establishing salaries for the JJC. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I was just wondering why councilman's voting, if anybody was aware of why. I don't know if he spoke. I'm not a councilman, but if anybody was on the meeting. Did not speak up? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 1-20.
Second.
There are motion of second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes two to one.
Just to clarify, you were just voting the motion, but then voted against your own motion? Okay, just checking.
I voted against my own motion.
All right, next we have bill 11019, ordinance 220, establishing salaries for the Dukeums here. Any questions or comments?
I'd ask the same question I asked before, which is if anybody knew what this councilman voted, and in lack of knowledge, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2-20.
Second.
We have motion of second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes bill 11119, ordinance 320.
Just clarification, Mr. Commissioner, did you vote yes or no on number two?
I voted yes.
Yes, okay.
Ordinance 320, establishing salaries for the Dukeums again. Any questions or comments?
And last, the third, and third time, I just wondered, in this case, why the councilman voted yes, because it seems like it's similar in nature to the other two ordinance, so I just couldn't understand. That's what makes my question, why one was bad and one was good, when it seems they're similar. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 3-20.
Second.
Motion of second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, bill 1119, ordinance 420, establishing salaries for adult probation. Questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
Is there a probation here? Jesse, you guys lost the grant. I bet he's.
State checking address for the record.
Good morning, Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer. Office is located here on the fourth floor of the county's building. What happened in this instance is the DOC restructured their funding process. We initially had two separate grants. They combined them this year. We also asked for additional folks. They didn't fund those additional folks. So this bill and ordinance was just to create a combined budget between the two prior grant funds that were spread, that they've rolled into one grant.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jesse. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance 4-20.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next item, bill 11519, ord 520. This is the monthly transfer and approbation bill. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve 5-20 ordinance.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, 10819, ordinance 620. This is a co-change regarding petty cash for the health department. Any questions or comments?
I'm just glad that they're reopening in Mishawaka again now to help everybody closer there in Mishawaka, so glad that that's happening.
Likewise.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance 6-20.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Finally, bill 10919, ordinance 720. This is establishing or amending human resource policy for new hires with sheriff's department. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance 7-20.
Second.
There are motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to the county police. Request approval of 2020 police vehicle bids and quotes.
Dean Chandler, 4817 Leeway West is where the office is. I'd like to start getting out new patrol vehicles for 2020. I'm going to get all police vehicles, and then I need to start a quote for a prisoner transport vehicle. I believe all the money was in the budget for this year, but I do have to go to the council to ask them to use that money next Tuesday.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
I'd certainly thank the major and the sheriff and all staff for the great work you do for the county. It's not very easy, and it was nice to see that helping in the news, working more with mental ill, with the creation of the position for Mr. Officer Benning, or Lieutenant Benning. And I just, you and the sheriff are just doing great things.
Thank you. I'll step onto the sheriff.
Yeah, I met up with the sheriff to talk to him. I was appreciative that that's happening.
They are out of town this week, so I think he was planning on coming today, but they're out of town.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this request for reapply for the local health department trust account grant.
This would be the.
I'm sorry, county police.
Yep.
Request approval 2020. I looked at the wrong one, my fault. Please, 2020 vehicle bids and quotes.
Second.
That's what I want.
Motion of kind of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, request approval of physician agreement for county jail, Ferrister. Also note, I know that it matters, but the Board of Commissioners is misspelled in both this and the follow, the subsequent agreement.
Well, we apologize for that. Peter Augustino, Deputy County Attorney, 131 South Street.
I thought I was just going to say it was a Latin.
We can go Latin. I have to look at this now.
Counselor, did you examine this?
Nope, that's Mr. Cusman. I misspelled.
Counselor, put your glasses on, it'll look clearer. Please.
Okay. We can, we can mark that out. That's material. That's a Scrivener's error. Both of these contracts, one is for Dr. Hall, and one is for a nurse practitioner, Stephanie Curtis, to continue the work of providing medical care that they work that has to be done at the jail, seeing our inmates on a medical call basis. And Dr. Hall was already doing this as a beacon employee before. He's continuing on now as a principal collaborator for our nurse practitioners, which is required under state law. And, but both contracts are coming in within alleged amounts for contract services for the services, and ask for your approval.
Can we sign them together?
Counselor, you don't mind if we vote on both these issues, do we?
Fine with that.
I don't have a complaint either.
Messed it up, wondering.
So I appreciate your, your and the sheriff's quick pivot on this. It was, I kind of found out late last year that this is the situation we were going to find ourselves in, so I appreciate you guys being able to find a solution that may provide the same level of service. It may even come in at a slightly lower price point, so appreciate all yours.
I think Commissioner Thomas has a question.
Thank you. Counselor, was there some, any thought or any clauses in here that say a nurse practitioner, Curtis, is ill, vacation, that someone may fill in for her, provided Dr. Hall approves? I would just have some insurance or a backup plan in place. Is there anything of that nature in this contract?
So there's two backup plans. In Dr. Hall's agreement, he would step down to cover that if the nurse practitioners could not. That's, that's one backup plan. We also are working on another contract with another practitioner, so that we can have that continuous coverage. And we do have an offer out to nurse practitioner. She's going through some hoops on her end in terms of her current employer. She was recommended to us by Dr. Hall as well, so that's in the works, but in the, in the short term, Dr. Hall would be doing that under his, under his.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'm glad that we actually just moved forward with trying to get in on a nurse practitioner, and because I was a little wondering how frequently she would be there, ability is so good.
Yeah, it's a daily coverage situation.
Good, good.
With back.
Right, right, right.
If there are no further questions, is there a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the physician agreement and the nurse practitioner agreement for the county.
Second.
Motion of second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next, health department requests approval to reapply the local health department trust account grant.
I think it's actually a request for two grants, plus local health maintenance fund grant.
Correct. Amy Ruby, Finance Manager for the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. It is to reapply for both of the grants, which do go hand in hand with others through the State Department of Health.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you and your staff for being able to keep these grants going. Thank you, Doctor. How's the new doctor fitting in?
Dr. Fox has been with us for some time. The deputy officer stepping in his interim. Wonderful.
Super. They're good things too. It's familiar stuff.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion for the health department to reapply for the local trust account grant.
And the local health maintenance fund grant. Two, both correct?
There's two of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Second motion.
We have motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next item, request approval of board of health appointment. Doctor?
Mark Fox for the Department of Health, eighth and ninth floor of this building. Just for the record, I'm sure you didn't feel compelled to say anything nice about me today, but thanks for sitting up for me, Commissioner. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Health requesting your approval of the appointment of Dr. Robert Einters as the county health officer beginning next month, so I will revert to my role as deputy health officer when he assumes that position.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you for correcting the terminology, questioning, because in the letter it says the board of health appointed somebody, and they get recommended to us to appoint. So thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. How's our lead? How's the lead situation? You've been a progressive leader on the level in the NNN neighborhood.
So our sting rates across the county were up by just over 20% per calendar year 2019 compared to 2018. That was what was targeted on high-risk areas. And actually, interestingly, our rates of abnormal tests were nowhere, sitting around 10% of the other abnormal.
And they just seen in the news last week, said our county was like, I don't know, fourth, certain trends, sexually transmitted diseases. That wasn't real nice of them to do that, but.
Well, we have to confront, confront the realities, so that one of our focal areas this year actually is to try to collaborate with different community partners around transmitted infection.
I think you heard, thank you for bringing up office in Mishawaka, finding the funds for that, because it certainly helps, you know.
And actually, you know, there was one new position approved in the 2020, in vital records, which enabled that function to reopen in Mishawaka, and otherwise immunization staff, we just redeployed them, so there, you know, the, the, no significant increase in cost to operate that.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah, thank you. You did a good job.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the board of health appointment as Robert Ein, how do you pronounce his last name?
Einters.
Einter, okay. Physician. Motion to approve his appointment.
Second.
We have motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Next, maintenance department got a request, request approval of floor mats contract.
Good morning, Helen Witsky, Maintenance Department, County City Building. We are requesting renewal of approval of annual contracts. First one is for Unit First, who provides our floor mats for various county builds and departments in this building.
Any questions or comments?
Can we do all these contracts, or do we have to do independent?
I think you should do them independently, because all separate renewals are not really related to one project.
Because they're all renewing the contracts that we already have, so that's why I was wondering.
Good question, good answer. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Well, there is a motion to approve the floor mats contract request.
Second.
We have motion of second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of renewal of pest control contract.
This is a request for can pest control to continue their services, both in this building and outside buildings, and so renewal of a contract.
Any questions or comments? Hearing on, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of this patrol contract.
Second.
There are motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Finally, request approval of renewal of preventative maintenance agreement, elevators.
This third request is approval of a contract, renewal of a contract with Schindler Elevator for the elevator in this building and other buildings.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of this preventive maintenance agreement for the elevators.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to procurement. Request approval of renewal contract with Integra Certified Document Destruction LLC.
Thank you. Bree Roberts, office is on the seventh floor of this building. This is our typical renewal for document destruction as well as recycling services, and this is through Integra Document Destruction LLC, aka Borden. We have looked into alternatives in the past. It never seems like it really works out as, as well as the situation. They pick up from Old Street. All of our bins are actually shredded, which we pay a significantly less amount for just the sorted off base, so that's a benefit. And we've also been doing business with Integra for quite a time, and it's always been positive, so requesting your approval of this renewal.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of this contract with Integra Certified Document Destruction LLC.
Second.
We have motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, infrastructure planning and growth. First item is the consent agenda, I will note. Local standby letter of credit cash in Fernwood Division Phase III, letter of credit cash in Overleaf Farms subdivision section three, and request to approve paid time adjustment. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Mr. Thomas.
I just certainly, again, and Engineer Clark, I heard her stacking tabs on these funds, these letters of credit cashing in nearly under, over $131,000 here, looking towards needed road and drainage movements. And as I mentioned at our meeting a few weeks ago, in light of the trend that happened in Mishawaka, you know, peopleizing ponds, drainage are much more important, but we finally had winter start this week, so we're going to have a spring thaw, which is going to put a pressure on the county drainage system. So if developers come along and disrupt things, or don't dispose to support, and we have these bonds in place to make sure that all county is protected. So again, thank you, Engineer Clark and your staff.
If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of danger solutions agreement, additional planning, engineering services for central garage. Mr. Thomas.
Good morning, Bill Elio, Economic Development, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the fourth and eleventh floor. The proposal before you today relates to the central garage property sandwiched between Lathrop and Cleveland Road. As we continue to move forward with disposition and work on that site, this contract became necessary. As we were working through the process this year to plat and subdivide the property, we didn't get the work completed before management or control of the work, which from the area plan commission to the city of South Bend. So as we need to do that and move through the process, we need to pair additional subdivision plat work and new documentation so that we can file with the city for that. Additionally, as we were working with the county highway garage project, converting that into a sheriff depot building, there's some work that needs to be done as far as plating the property and subdividing, including new lot lines. Additionally, this contract will cover some survey work that's needed for the installation of a fence and a service road to the north side. So a lot of pieces and parts of this project, the, the total proposal, the amount of 74,000. The disposal had gone through the redevelopment commission for its approval on the 14th, and we'd have your approval. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions? Mr. Thomas.
So this is for item five, $74,000?
So it's, no, oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're correct, yeah. So it would be the.
Paragraph from the bottom.
Yeah, no, no, I want to make sure that the math is correct. I believe the total scope work is 74,000. Yeah, the scope of work is 74,000, with the addition of 56,000, that being for item number five, I believe.
Well, if I read it, the third paragraph from the bottom, it says, the budget work items one through four is roughly $20,000 period. The budget for item five is roughly 74,000.
He's referring to your cover letter, Mr. Shalyo. Yeah, no, no, I understand that.
So I would think 74,000 plus 20,000 is 94,000.
Right. What I'll do is, is if we table this item for a moment, come back to it, I'll have Ms. Clark, Engineer Clark, do the math for me. My math skills got in my, with a good project.
Would you like me to hold all questions on this matter?
Yeah, you could.
I have no objection to.
I'm sure her math skill, her math will be done.
All right, then we'll move on to item C. I believe we can, we can tackle this in one region. We've got request approval of appraisal services for Northwest Garage Site, both appraisal services and with Iverson Grove MAI, SRA.
Yes, as we, as we look to consider locations for Highway Garage, we have identified the northwest part of the county, that an extension of the existing garage footprint would be the ideal way to manage that project. We've met with adjacent property owners. We've worked up various scenarios for how property could be appraised. There's a series of one through six, specific to proposal B, how different appraisals would be, would be assembled. Proposal A relates to two properties in a map and a packet that are immediately adjacent and surrounded by parcels four through eight. So what we'd like to do is get two separate proposals, or two separate sets of appraisals, and because we have to get two independents of appraisals, there's two proposals here. So the proposal before you from appraisal services is in a total amount of 63, or, yeah, $6,300. The other one is $6,000 with Iverson Grove, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions? Commissioner Thomas.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Shalyo, how many acres is this proposing to appraise?
So I, I believe if you look at, if I remember right, properties four, five, six, seven, and eight are just under 150 acres. Our anticipation, our anticipated purchase is, is extremely less than that.
So, but we're looking at appraising our 50 acres.
Correct.
And you know how many acres the current highway garage is right next door to this?
I believe it sits on 12 acres.
Acres, and not all 12 acres are used by the county. So if we got a 12 acre parcel, why wouldn't we be looking at potentially buying or leasing 150 acres?
So part of the challenge is if you look at the map, on parcel five, there's an irrigation pivot. Irrigation pivot hits parcels five, six, seven, eight, and four. And so as we talked to the property owner, what we're trying to do is determine the value of acquisition of five, how that affects the potential for acquisition of other properties. The other thing too, is we look at parcel six, if Smilax Road were to be extended north, we would need to acquire property from parcel six for Smilax Road North Extended. So we're looking at this from a couple of different aspects on how site layout would be done and how site layout could be accomplished. That's why we're seeking all the various permeations of the appraisals from parcel B.
Yeah, but earlier you didn't mention Smilax for extension. This was just supposedly for highway garage, correct?
Well, highway garage needs us to...
You've already identified the location. In addition to the pivot, I also see there's a very significant county ditch.
Correct.
That runs through parcels four, six, seven, and eight.
Correct.
And we certainly wouldn't want to build on top of a ditch, 150 acres, when we only need, you know, 10, 12, 15 acres for a highway garage.
That's correct.
And if I, I'm positive, Mr. Shalio, that the last couple of years, we've already bought land that was, again, considered and identified for highway garage that was south of two, east of Larison Road.
So actually we have...
It seems that the, this, the use or the consideration identifying of highway garages just seems to apply all over the New Carleile area. And again, to replace 10, 15 acres with 150, just, and it's run farmed, already has a valuable irrigation pivot, already has a valuable drainage system to the, in north of US 20, which is just the whole wetlands of northern part of New Carleile, which is a high, very high water table, and the whole area of Peister Lake County Park to keep that from overflowing, and all those farms as well. And it's that this is more bad planning and bad waste of government and taxpayers' property and assets.
So let's just clear up one of those pieces of misinformation. First, we have not bought any property south of State Route Two. At the present time, there's no property we've acquired south of State Route Two and the intersection of Larison.
Okay, have you bought any land and said it was for the fire department?
No.
Okay. Oh, well, I take that back, and actually that's closer to my next thing. It's been proposed, I believe by you or your staff, that this be a combination, new highway garage, and New Carleile Fire Station, and possibly gas station.
So there was a concept early on where we would consider that at the southeast corner of Strawberry and Two. But as we've worked with the state and worked with Lockmueller and worked with some other business partners, a large section of that quadrant of that property would be needed for intersection improvements at Larison and Two. So that would be an acceptable location for the site. I already own a site, and so our thought process now, as we work with DLZ, our site consultant for the highway garage project, the ideal site probably for the highway garage is this site. We've done soil borons, we've done some other work to determine the viability of the site as an expanded garage site. As far as the fire station project, at this point in time, now that there's a fire territory that's been established, the fire territory needs to set their demands and their schedule as far as where our station would need to be placed if at some point our station needs to be added to this area.
I still think, and I could wrong, that the county did buy land south of Two. But do you think the county bought land enough to?
We actually did buy three properties at the corner of Two and Willow. None of those three properties have been identified for a highway garage, a fire station, or any other public, other than drainage at this point.
And I think you also said Two and Strawberry, was it?
We have, no, Two and Strawberry.
Or gas station.
So Larison goes south, becomes Strawberry, as it goes south. But no, we haven't bought, have not bought any property south of State Route Two.
But it has bought land along Two.
Correct. North of Two, yes.
Again, I see this as just wasteful speculation. And again, there's a valuable ditch serving the whole region, which has flooding problems. Hudson Lake, we're in the side of the county line. And some farmers invested a lot of money in this pivot and this well system, which this, again, seems like the most illogical location to expand. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? It would be both C and D for both appraisals.
Okay, a motion to approve the appraisal services for the Northwest Garage Site on these two areas, or for these two companies.
Second, we have a motion, a second, although in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one, Bill, Q four. Once again, as we begin looking at anything proper planning is, we take a look at the needs that could possibly happen. If we're gonna go through the process, we might as well go through a month and try and peel this back together. And I think it makes sense to follow our, the recommendation of our consultants in case DLZ, as we take a look at it as my most viable option for A, highway garage, and also we could find some funding for redevelopment to do that, which is always helpful.
If we could return to the item before, the math has been completed. So the math, if you add up all the lows and the highs, it adds up, the low side is 78,650 dollars. The high side would be 81,950 dollars, that this proposal could range. However, as Ms. Clark pointed out, the RC only approved 74,000. So all we would seek today is approval of 74,000 of this contract. I anticipate that we will use that amount, but that is the amount that the commission approved. That would be a request that I would have before you today.
So barring that news, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Engineer Clark, for the revision of math. So where it says items one through four, roughly $20,000, we're discussing, we're taking that off the table, right? We're discussing item five, 74,000, or we're discussing off the line?
No, so items, items one through five, the range would be 78,6 to 81. All the commission approved was 74,000 for those five end items. So that's all we would request for your approval.
Okay. Item one, briefly, just starting it, I'm just beginning of five items. Prepare a subdivision plat for higher property. Item two, prepare a general grading plan, and I would think this refers to water flow in the scope of the land. Three, prepare a preliminary sketch, a new public road, and a private ditch. So that'd be not a public ditch, a big private ditch.
It says, it says drive, just maybe...
Private.
Huh? It says private drive?
Drive.
Oh, sorry. I got ditch everywhere.
I guess, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for correcting me. Four, prepare a sketch plan for temporary construction and access to the Central County site for the new extended, from a new extended roadway. Five, prepare a major subdivision for 2903, 2930 Foundation Drive. Major subdivision, what would a major subdivision be?
So, so as we would look at the property with the corporation has in the property immediately across the street, which would be the truck terminal and property, we're halfway through the process to dispose the land to adjacent user. Those properties would need to be divided at some point to allow for the NERN extension of Foundation Drive north of Boland Drive. So the major subdivision includes plating of the property, plating of the roadway corridor, and other work associated with that. At this point in time, we're still working through the process with Eaton Corporation to get their approval to do that work. But that was one of the hangups for why the project did not get approved through the county process. The county was in control of the process.
And it's no great secret that I'm not of favor of selling this land. Earlier you mentioned, you know, the sheriff's link, and the process is going on there. Do you know if they've added the ADA compliant elevator for the second floor?
There's not an elevator that's being added for the project.
Thank you.
No more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve Dan Turner and Associates Agreement for Engineering Services for the Central Garage.
Second, we've got a motion, a second, although in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pass two to one. Next, request approval of purchase of 494 and 496 East Michigan Street, New Carleile.
So I neglected to pass this out earlier to Thomas and ask for that. The two yellow items that have been approved, maybe they have been added to the website?
Thank you, sir.
You had asked me that last time, and I had hoped to get it in the fact that this guy didn't make it.
Sir, since this is one discussion right now, the total is over $6 million being spent in New Carleile, and...
Well, I would note, I mean, correct, that assumes that we get the Chrissy grant, which has an 800,000 or match. So it would actually be less than 6 million if we don't get that grant.
Okay. We hope to get the grant.
We do, absolutely.
If we would have reset that one grant for Nistar, or whatever, that would have been another, that would have been over a million dollars to this.
Correct, yes.
And the, I don't see, I don't think I see any of the legal firms here or the accounting rooms listed.
So we keep all those, all that account is done through our general account budget, so it's not applied to this work here specifically?
It seems like some of it, or all of it should, at least some of it. And is that why the word at the top right here is word subtotal and not total?
I read subtotals, and the total row is at the bottom. So the subtotal of each, or of each element...
Well, subtotal goes across the top to the left, right?
Right, well, it goes from left to right, correct.
So that's a subtotal of this section, you know, I've been in account, I've seen enough spreadsheets that think that there would be more columns after subtotal, that would make another subtotal, or and or another total.
And that's fine, I can certainly take the word sub off, not being an accountant, but rather being an attorney. Yeah, attorneys and accountants aren't the same.
So the word subtotal, there is no other column?
There's no hidden column beyond this, no column that doesn't get printed out. We'll be happy to take the word sub off if that clears any concern or consternation.
Thank you, thank you kindly, sir.
So the agenda item before today, right now, is the agenda for the purchase of 494, 496 East Michigan Street, New Carleile. For the last year, economic development staff has been with the Northern Indiana Community Transportation District, examined the potential opportunities to develop passenger rail service station in or near New Carleile. A feasibility study report was done and identified a series of properties along East Michigan Street that would be ideal for a number of reasons for a new station location. Towards the end of last year, the property owner that owned 494 East Michigan Street contacted county staff about his interest in retiring out of the trailer park or mobile home industry. His contract or his license expired at the end of last calendar year, so at the end of 2019. And as part of not renewing his license and not seeing to sell his license or his license rec, he approached the county on the potential to dispose of his property to county. The county had previously appraised the property, and in the process of having conversations about the potential for land banking this site, it seemed it's in the best interest and it is in the best interest of the county at this point in time and for this project, to land bank this property. The property would be acquired, it would be cleared, and it will be held until such time as a project decision is made. County will be working with the town of New Carleile as we add master planning for this site. And what I would say from the, from the study results, it will take a rise passenger ability before, to a point where there is a station potential at this location. Purchase price for 494 East Michigan Street, the appraisal value, the average of two appraisals, is 287,500. And the property owners are eligible for relocation expenses and $40,000 as closeout expenses. The total purchase price would be 327,500. Purchase price for 496 East Michigan Street, which is a rental property adjacent and associated with this property, is 81, average value is $81,000. And the property owner, Rosalie Woodcox, is eligible for $5,000 for closeout relocation expenses for that property. The relocation expenses are calculated using the NDOTs appraisal and relocation guideline book is available. The total purchase price of this property is $6,000. Staff request commissioner approval of these purchases.
Questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Bill, the last page of your cover letter says, "Staff request commission approve the purchase of these parcels, properties, rather." Did the redevelopment not vote on this?
So this is a purchase being done through the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners has authority to buy property by using average of two independent appraisals. And so we're using the Board of Commissioners to purchase this. I left the RS off the end of the word commissioners or commission, that's my error, but it was commissioners.
Okay, so the redevelopment, you didn't see this or discuss it?
Correct.
Thank you. And then, this is the, this is the Trailer Park on 20, next American Legion, correct?
That is correct.
Were you, were you familiar that both the Trailer Park and the American Legion frequently flood?
That is understanding, that is correct. Now, my understanding is the American Legion has done a dramatic amount of engineering work to prevent or reduce flooding, but there still are flooding issues on site.
Yes, and that's actually built underground, after underground. So it's, it's, that whole, and that whole, like mentioned earlier with the, that drainage ditch that's so critical to the north of 20, that, that helps try to relieve the flooding problem. It still exists through that whole region, and it seems to capitalize and most harm the, both the American Legion and this Trailer Park. And I think for that reason, the Trailer Park was not very, was, let's say, filled to capacity, okay? So I think the county, he said it was the best interest of money to land bank this land, this piece of parcel. I think it better be in the best interest of the county not to waste over $400,000 on this property. The one parcel's 327,500 plus $40,000 relocation. You know, if nobody really living there, why would we pay $40,000? The other parcels, 81,000, $5,000 relocation, or maybe I got my words backwards. The first, the first one was 287,500 plus $40,000, correct?
That's correct.
For a total of 327,500. And the second one is 81,000 plus 586,000. So $400,000, a lot of money on speculation to buy basically swamp land that people don't wanna live on, except maybe Muscos. And it has such a history of flooding, and, and to say it's potentially for Nicky to build a south shore station, one, they should pay their own bills, as I've stated many times. And that would be the most illogical place in the world to build a shore station. It'd be more logical to build one in Seola than to build one in New Carleile at this location with that water table and flooding, to build things, again, there's that word ADA compliant, that people up to that hill where the tracks are, well, the tracks don't exist, unless we get that grant money to fix the ridge and install another set of tracks. There's so many things that, it may, it could take 20 years for people finally say, "Well, jeez, we just went, spent 200 million dollars wasted on this project to finally stop." Hopefully it doesn't take that long. You know, there's the Hudson Lake stop, which is at grade, doesn't seem to have the flooding problem. And Nicky has never invested any more than a flag stop there, which is on the other side of Carleile. So to say that east side of Carleile would need some elaborate section is just out of the realm of what's needed in this region. And to build one in that land that is so flooded and potential to flooding, the weight construction of any building for people that need it, again, it just seems really ridiculous and dumb, you know? I just, I just can't believe these things just keep coming before this board and that, and people wanna squon taxpayers' money in these ways, you know? I'm sure there's other swamp in Central County that, you know, how many acres is this for over 400 grand? Can you tell me?
2.67 acres.
2.7 acres, so that's over $1,000 an acre of swamp land. That's just, thank you for your honest standards, but it's just really, really dumb. And I just, I just can't believe this stuff comes before this board.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the purchase of 494 and 496 East Michigan Street in New Carleile.
Second, we have a motion, a second, although in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Move past two to one. Bill, just a couple of points on this. This is not necessarily forestation with the south shore, it could be, but it's also, it's an ISO, it was a piece of property that was, that had some issue in New Carleile, so this is the possibility of. We may part with the legion that's there. They're, they've interested in acquiring some more lands. I mean, this is, we're gonna use this in partnership with the town of New Carleile to see if we could find a way to bring that property back up and have a more useful production. So I would also, while there have been some flooding issues, I would not believe this could be characterized as swamp land. But anyway, that's, I'm a civil engineer, so I can't do that. All right.
Mr. Shalio, the end of your vote after the vote.
Doesn't matter, moving on to...
It doesn't matter.
Request approval of change order number one.
The end of your first paragraph states that this is for the best location for future rail station for September 2019 study. Has that been, what, four months ago, five ago?
Correct.
Thank you.
And there's no guarantee that it goes there either. Moving on to request approval, change order number one, building 042019, construction and renovation of offices, Phase One Central Highway Garage.
Good morning, Jessica Clark, the engineer with offices of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth on the fourth, seventh, and eleventh floors. Our first item today, my first item today, is the change order with respect to the renovation of Central Highway Garage. This change order is an amount of $84,738. The majority of this work has to do with bringing certain aspects of the building that they uncovered during the demolitions to air code, current fire safety code, installing the web-based climate controls that are accessible through the building, but also necessary for the evidence room, and also some drainage improvements within the site itself. We need a trench drain versus the elevated smaller drains, it's just ease for maintenance and those types of things. These requests were initiated through the sheriff's department, supportive sheriff's department, and we're recommending your approval.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
Hi there, Ms. Fleming.
You got a full motion, congratulations.
And Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Hammond. Ms. Clark, though, have you done a lot of work on this project?
Partly.
The remodeling of the... The remodeling of the, you've done a lot of work, the cover letter was signed by Frank Fortier.
Yes.
Have you read that?
He's been the, he's been the point person, uh, within our department, and he is out sick today, so I'm covering this item for him.
That's very good of you. Now, normally when there's a change order, it's change order number one.
Correct.
Uh, and your office presents it, it refers to like an issue, one issue. If there's more than one issue, there's more than one change order.
Depends.
Very common procedure.
It depends. In our federal projects, we do have to complete separate change orders for different aspects of scope. On our local projects, we do group changes together.
Yeah. It seems like this is a lot of different changes under one change order number. I thought that it just wasn't, it didn't seem as transparent as what NDOT or, or federal Department of Transportation requires, uh, so that, that, that I thought was odd. And you mentioned central aspect, certain aspects, I believe, of the problem, is it was like, was it drainage and ground piping?
So within maintenance garage area, they're looking to install a, a single trench drain that spans the area to help promote that drainage and ease of maintenance for that drainage for in the building itself.
For inside building.
Yes.
Don't you think the engineers designing this building or designing this construction should have had that in their design and incorporate somehow?
It's really kind of a preference item that the sheriff heard, so that's what they're recommending out.
Well, I wouldn't dump this dogwood fleece on the Sheriff's Department. Uh, then another, and, and, and the contractor seems to be doing all this strange work that's from out of state. Uh, you know, I've always been a supporter of the RBO and supporting local employees, and it seems like an out-of-state contractor is getting that work. Uh, and I, and also, you mentioned like fire codes. Um, I'd see that there was, uh, expense for, there was no fire dampers? Would that be in the ventilation system?
So the, the majority of the fire issues were they ended up having to move certain walls, and once they removed those walls, the insides themselves did not comply with the current codes, so they have to be up to date.
Again, I think that's something that the design engineer should have factored in. It seems like that would be basic. Um, and there seemed to be a problem with the doors. Is it the, it, it, am I going to read this correctly, that someone ordered doors but didn't include door frames? Is that accurate?
I have, I, that I'm not aware of.
That's the, I get reading some of this.
Get the question from Frank.
And that seems like when you buy a door, frames usually come with it, but buying a car without tires, and it seems that, uh, it seems really hokey, to be honest. Uh, not that it was a bad plan from the first. The Sheriff's Department deserved a brand-new building. Oh, and your knowledge, uh, is, again, is there an ADA compliant elevator on the second floor? Do you know?
Again, as stated, it's not an elevator included in this project.
Thank you, just checking. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the change order number one for the construction and renovation offices of the central highway garage.
Second, we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed two to one. Once again, Jessica, I mean, to the best of your knowledge, many of these, um, flea-ridden dog issues are being brought up by the Sheriff Department, not necessarily, so that these are some of the changes they would like to have seen made throughout this process.
Correct.
So we're working with the Sheriff Department to get them on what they would...
Again, things that a, a good designer and a good designer planned...
Moving on to bid request. We can do these all in one.
Please.
Yep, so we've got bid requests for the countywide annual bid for 2020 looktumines, miscellaneous aggregates, drain pipes, structures, guardrail, and bridge materials, fuels, oils, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials, for tumines, patching material, and traffic paint and signage materials.
Yes, we have bid requests for the various highway annual bids 2020. We're requesting that you authorize advertising for Friday, January 24th and the 31st with a bid opening on February 18th.
Question to comments? Is there a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion to approve the advertising and bid requests for the all-material bids.
Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of RNS 91801 miscellaneous road resursicing rehabilitation in county divisions districts one, two, and three, final change order.
This is the final change order for the 18 neighborhood package paving patch. Results in overall decrease of $31,090.87. The final contract amount is $2,797,279.63, and we recommend your approval.
Mr. Thomas.
Who's that? I was like, it's that phone. Madam Engineer?
Yes.
Um, thank you for all your hard work, as usual, and, but I just got a question. Uh, where's change order, this, these decreases save 30, in the second paragraph?
Yes.
Saves $31,290.87?
Yes.
Okay. When I look at the very last page of the, of the report I have, which says page three of 10, the very last item is, uh, South Bay Community Schools, uh, parking or something, $101,000? Because it's a positive number, and they're reimbursing us, shouldn't we add $101,000 to that $31,000, so the savings of $132,000?
Per the final track of this project?
No.
No.
But, no, yes.
The county is receiving reimbursement from the Sound School Corporation that goes back into funds that, that goes to our paving program.
So for that paperwork, no, but for reality, yes.
Yes.
Super. So that's an extra $101,000. Way to go, Engineer, Madam Engineer.
Question to comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this miscellaneous road resursicing rehabilitation in county divisions one, two, and three.
Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of RNS 91801 D. Maintenance Asphalt Over, final change order.
Again, this is final change order for our maintenance asphalt overlay program in 2018. It is a decrease of $126,410.36. The overall contract amount was $369,485.47, and we recommend your approval.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, Madam Engineer, basically same comment from the last issue, except this time it'd be a smaller amount and making it near as Madison school system.
Yes.
So we're actually, they're saving more than $101,000. Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this maintenance asphalt overlay final change order.
Second. Motion, a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of RNS 91801 miscellaneous road resursicing rehabilitation in county subdivision districts one, two, and three, projectation affidavit.
This is the final document for completion of this project. Reeve Riley completed the work, and we request your approval.
Thomas.
Again, Madam Engineer, uh, I'm happy to say I didn't receive complaints about the lining up of roads and driveways as I've had in the past, so I wanted to step on, thank you and your staff for keeping holding our vendors to do their jobs, the day-to-day.
No more questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, a motion to request is, um, approval of the miscellaneous road resursicing rehabilitation with the other construction company in districts one, two, and three.
Second. Motion, a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, request approval of RNS 91801 D. Maintenance Asphalt Overlay Project Completion Affidavit.
Again, this was our project completion affidavit for maintenance asphalt overlay program in 2018. This is the final document necessary to get this project out, and we request your approval.
Mr. Thomas.
Uh, same comment as topic, thank you, you and Chip and your staff for the good job on the lines of the driveway.
No more questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve this asphalt overlay project completion with Reeve Riley Construction Company final project cost.
Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of bid award, RNS 91901 D. Tube Maintenance Asphalt Overlay CMG Program.
We've read aloud bids on Tuesday, January 10th. We received bids from Reeve Riley, Walsh Helly, and Niblock. Bid tabulation is enclosed for your review. On the review of the bids, we do amend that you award it in the base bid amount of $2146,000 to Reeve Riley. At the time that we, in the bids, we had addendum that had been out that revised the proposal sheet. Reeve Riley did use correct proposal sheet for the items affected. They had attached a previous page for the second sheet of proposal, but did not change any of those items, so their bid is compliant with the contract.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bid award to Reeve Riley.
Second. Motion, a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, approval of integrated permit processing system in county REAL application.
Lastly, we, this is a continuation of our contract from 2019 and years prior for other departments with REAL applications. The majority of this work with us will hope to transition into an ERP system once that is fallen online in 2022. At this time, that's the, at the date, we're looking for implementation of that. However, between now and, we need to continue these support services and the use of these programs. It benefits, uh, residents, our business communities, our departments, to be able to, to coordinate our apps when it comes to development, reviewing site plans, reviewing subdivision, and coordinating building permits, driveway permits, those type of things.
Questions or comments? Mr. Thomas.
Hi, I frequently comment whenever there's hardware-software issues, uh, and I would say that REAL is a great firm, they've done a lot of great work for the county over the last few decades, and their stuff is very eye-pleasing, is very user-friendly, and, and we're very lucky to have them.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I just, I just want to say that, again, it benefits the public by providing better customer service through efficiency, accessibility, and convenience, so I'm glad to upgrade and keep improving the customer service through the county, so I'm glad we're doing this. Thank you.
No more questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the integrated permit processing system and countywide REAL applications.
Second. Motion, a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
None of old business, seeing none. Public comments? Are there any public comments? So, please state your name and address the record, and you've got three minutes to address the board.
Good morning. Deborah Durell, 21677 Alton Road, South Bend. I'm speaking today as a member of the Open Space Agricultural Alliance with the support of six additional concerned citizens, and I have their names and addresses here that I can submit with my comments. We ask the Board of Commissioners to set a date for the Economic Development Commission to release funds to the Area Plan Commission to start work on updating the comprehensive land use plan. The comprehensive land use plan should be completed before the IEC master plan or study as it is more broad and inclusive and set guidelines for all the, all development, which the Area Plan Commission factors into recommendations. The land use plan from 2002 established agriculture as a priority for the county limits industrial development in the New Carlisle economic area to the existing amount. More property has been purchased by the Economic Development Committee for the stated reasons of water management not requiring rezoning, but is now in the process to rezone from agricultural to include industrial development. This action runs counter to the existing 2002 comprehensive plan. We have not had answers about these delay or changes to zoning yet, and would ask further that these answers be given on the record for public awareness and involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Caruso, 35 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I'm a little confused, that's no major accomplishments, so don't pat yourselves on the back. At a public hearing in this room some months ago, a spokesperson from Nick D. got to the microphone, referred to New Carlisle, Olive Town, Olive and Hudson Lake as a bottleneck to this quicker rail service to Chicago, and that we have to get in our cars and either drive to Chicago or drive to Michigan City to advantage of this high-speed, lack of better word, rail service.
Higher, I want to give the misconception that it's going to be high-speed.
Yeah, not high-speed, a, a quicker rail service.
Yes.
Uh, should this rail service be offered, we would have to travel to those pla-, to either South Bend or Michigan City to take advantage of it. Now, we just bought some swamp land at 494 and 496 Michigan, potentially, and it wasn't denied, build a rail station there, looking at feasibility of being a rail station there. That is then just going to be a bottleneck, it's going to be an advantage to me living in New Carlisle, or to friends in Hudson Lake, or in Olive Township. We're still going to have to travel to South Bend or Michigan City to take, to use this. I echo Commissioner Thomas in his outreach over the purchase for $100,000 an acre of this land for the purpose of controlling more property. That is the, that is the most galling to me, to ta-, to say you are trolling me, and there was no input from the people of New Carlisle, there was no public hearing, nothing. Just, yeah, we're going to, we're letting control more of our land. Um, and I do have a question. Is there a reason why we went through the, the appeal through the Commissioners rather than the Redevelopment Commission? Is there, is there advantage to that? Is it just streamlined things? Just curious as to why I went, chose that avenue this time rather than the usual avenue of going through the Redevelopment Commission? Thank you.
Bob Humberger, 29987 Heard Road, Olive Township. First of all, I like this, everybody, I like using this house shore. I don't, uh, drive to Hudson Lake, push the button, train stops, I get on, go to Chicago, come back, get off. Even though Mr. Costelli says that this could be used for rehab of property for New Carlisle, we all know this is disingenuous. Redevelopment Commission has stated many times that they want this property for this house shore. If the purchase of 494 and 496 means moving this house shore to the east side of New Carlisle, it will cut my travel time from nine miles to four and a half miles, and five minutes' time down to three minutes' time, and I'd like to thank the Commissioners for taking this into consideration in the future. Of course, this is sarcasm. I know you don't buy per, purchase pretty and make it more convenient for the people of Olive Township. Personal advantages aside, if moving this house shore station to the east side of New Carlisle as future IEC area employees, it only saves them about two and a half miles and five minutes. Even if, um, the, comes, even if the field dreams, uh, dream of the IEC come true, and all kinds of employees coming out there and using that station, employees still would have to take a shuttle bus to get to the rest of the IEC. And taking a shuttle bus from Hudson Lake stop would only add, or would only save them three minutes. So I don't see any advantage of having this, uh, uh, station on the east side of New Carlisle when the one at Hudson Lake is only three minutes away. So spending $400,000 now, uh, now for the future possible community convenience when the county is strapped for many other important funds, all of, all of, to fund all of their needs, is to be kind, pure folly.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Durell and, uh, other speakers, you know it's public comments, when you, you have the right to speak, we're not obligated to comment, but, uh, I will find us some of your comments, because I think it's worth, you, you share something from somebody. There's other comments I would like to make as a representative of the people and as some of this community. Ms. Durell, first of all, that money be appropriated for the study, blah, 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 that, that could, that, you better watch what you ask for, because that could be the mouse more cheese, and that could create where they'll help fund whatever dialogue or plan they're funding, okay? Um, Mr. Caruso, uh, again, I agree with all of you folks, pretty much, you know, the , the house shore, you know, it's nostalgia... nostalgic, it's a beautiful old train, but it's not reliable. Whenever they talk about it's going to be this much faster, that's much faster, they always the word if. If there's double railing in Lake County, in County, if they change the entrance to the airport to another location, the fact is that train seems to break almost daily. It seems they're constantly giving free rides to this group or that group, which probably inflates the number of riders. And even this weekend, you know, with, with the anticipation of they call ice and snow in northern Indiana, uh, it's my understanding they advertised that on weekend you could take the, the bus from New Carlisle to, uh, well, Hudson Lake to South Bend. So if I understand it this weekend, they didn't even run from South Bend to Hudson Lake, because they were scared they called ice and snow, which is, you know, happen pretty regularly here in northern Indiana. Um, and, and, and yes, it, it seems a shame, and, and you have to wonder why the Redevelopment Commission didn't approve the purchase of this land, because I, I'd, that seems even more transparent that way. It seems that's how they weigh the functioning to this point, and it seems there's going to be a purchase, that's where the fund's going to come from, which means they have to prove rate, they have to break funding. So where that funding's going to come, I guess we'll find out later. Um, so there's just, there's so much more issues. It's just a v-, very bad plan. It's a very bad money, and it seems transparency's going downhill, but the costs are going up. Uh, and I'll change yours and remind everybody that yesterday was Martin King Junior Day. It was a beautiful day for our country to, uh, promote peace and unity. And this is a beautiful country where we change permits in a ballot box and not with guns or vice like in other countries. And then lastly, I'd remind people, uh, unless I have to respond further, that we do have Commissioner Stack's certificate selling up March 4th, and it's down to 1,369 parcels. So it's, uh, a much bigger number than when Mr. Costelli and I started, and it was in the 1618 range. So, uh, please buy land, but buy it for a good purpose. Not, 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 not the government, citizens. Please help promote RNSA. Thank you.
Public comments? Seeing a motion to recess is in order.
So moved?
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tough luck. You are recessed.
Thank you very much.
No, I think it's for not to re.
Yeah.
Public to sign, I believe.
Said sign here.
Phone in the pocket, be helpful. It's going to be.
Not a republic, but not us.